Call the meeting to order. We are not only in quorum, but a full house. Would you please stand for the invocation delivered by Alex Garcia, Pastor Fredericksburg Bible Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, B.C.
Next item of business is ceremonial matters, proclamations and employee recognition. And the first item of business is a ceremonial swearing in and issuing of the certificate of elections to our winners in the recent election council elections, Bobby Watson and Randy Breiley. Judge Becker is here to do the ceremonial swearing in. Oh, there she is. Okay. So gentlemen, would you mind coming out forward here to be sworn in? I have a couple of announcements to make regarding the meeting today. Mr. Bagley?
Hi, sir. Mayor Council, I wanted to make an employee announcement. We have a new interim building official. Michael Irwin was recently promoted to that position. He is with us today. I'm not going to put him on the spot and have him come up and give all the background and so forth, but he has been in the building department for six years. Is that correct? So we welcome him in that position and a face you will probably see in front of the council from time to time.
One other announcement regarding the agenda. Ms. Hudson?
Yes, so public hearing notices went out for the East 400 Block of East Austin for rezoning, and that went to landing and zoning at their last meeting, but did not receive a favorable recommendation. So the applicant pulled that application. So if anyone is here for the rezoning of East Austin, that will not take place today.
Thank you. Council comments?
Prepare as appropriate to make a comment on the election. So a couple of thoughts or a couple of points I wrote down last night is just a word of thanks to my wife. I know she's taking care of our granddaughter and marketing director, so I think she's in the lobby, for our unwavering support in doing this, running an election. If anybody's done it, it is challenging for sure. My sincere respect and appreciation to all candidates who competed in this election. We ran, I think everyone ran, a very cordial election campaign, and I'm very, very thankful for that, for our town in particular. I also want to acknowledge our city staff, in particular Shelley, along with all of the election volunteers. I know there's a number of volunteers sitting here today. The city runs an extremely tight process on this, and the rigor that goes into it, and especially the election recount was very impressive. If you've ever been unsure about the city's election process, I encourage you to please volunteer next year. I think you'll learn a lot, you'll be educated, and you'll just be impressed by the amount of work that goes into this. And lastly, I could not say, I couldn't be more humbled or excited to be serving this capacity along with these incredible folks at this council. And my commitment will always be to do what is best for our community. So thank you for all this support.
Thank you. Councilman Breiley, welcome. Other council comments?
I have a few. One, we really need lifeguards. So if you know of any able-bodied people over age fifteen, all ages, please have them apply. It's very crucial to the success of our swimming pools this summer. Another thing, Leadership Gillespie County, Class of 2023, just graduated on Friday, and they have applications are available for Class of 2024. You can check those out on the Chamber website. And also wanted to talk a little bit about Fort Martin Scott. Mayor Hoover, is that okay if I give the update now? So there are, of the thirty-four bills that were related to historic preservation in the realm of historic sites, eight of them are still moving through the process. And some of them will have great impact if we choose to improve Fort Martin Scott in any way. Different things with funding and trusts and endowments. There's one bill that's moving quite well, is saying that financial resources must be available or assured, including an endowment fund where appropriate, or sources of funding may be identified prior to the historical commission considering acceptance of the gift of a property. So there's concern among some legislators that they would be accepting property with a significant investment of state resources. We've also been in talks with the Pioneer Museum and Historical Society and what that might look like to partner. So things are very much in flux. We could write a letter, if y'all are willing, to say that we're interested in looking at the historical commission working with us on Fort Martin Scott. But really, until after the legislature's over, May twenty-ninth, we'll be looking at, could be looking at a different set. So that's my update there.
Thank you. Mayor, a couple of things. First, I'd like to congratulate Randy in welcoming to the council and look forward to working with you. I also like to thank everyone involved in the election. It was run very smooth and I'm very happy with the results, I might add. So thank everyone for your support. Secondly, airport board meeting was yesterday. We have a hundred percent occupancy in the T hangars, with twenty-eight on the waiting list. Fuel sales are still slow, but catching up with last year. We have three hangars under construction, and if you'll go out to the airport, you'll see slabs poured, steel being delivered, so those things start taking shape soon. Seventy-fifth anniversary open house is this Saturday. Here's the flyer. It's from ten to four P.M., all kinds of activities, airplanes on display, airplane rides in a biplane, so a lot of things to do. It is also the Aviation Career Day. Organizations that will be there, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Civil Air Patrol, Angelo State University, Shriner University Flight School, Central Texas College Flight School, Hallmark University, they have Aviation Management Maintenance Program, Texas Colt Aircraft, Textron Aviation, Aircraft Donors and Pilots Association, NASA, Pittkin and York Avionics. And as part of the opening ceremony, I would like to announce that our mayor will be singing the national anthem.
Oh.
In case you didn't know.
I did know, yes. Thank you.
So that's from ten to four this Saturday at the airport. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Regarding the election, the last meeting we had, there was no way to know for us how the results would turn out. So we didn't know that it would be Sharon's last meeting with us, so I wanted to make sure to say publicly on behalf of the council, our immense thanks to Sharon stepping up and filling in the year and filling in the slot that was vacated by a former council member. She served the community with distinction, which is her habit. She's been here a long time and knows lots of people, and there's no one with a greater love for Fredericksburg than Sharon Joseph. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to Sharon. All right. Okay. We'll go to item number six, is the consent agenda, council, with two items on. One is the approval of amendments for the last meeting on, I'm sorry, yeah, the last two meetings, April eighteenth, which is a planning and zoning and joint meeting with council, May second, our last regular meeting, and the purchase of a file storage system, presented by our IT Director, Eric Whiting, which is a budgeted item.
I move we approve the consent item on the council meetings for April eighteenth and May second.
And the B as well?
And what?
And the item B, the file storage system?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
The entire gen. Okay. Motion second to approve this as a consent agenda item. Any further question? All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me. Item number seven, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Item seven A is a franchise agreement. This is the second reading of this, of this item. Do we need to go to Chris?
Yes, sir. Universal Natural Gas LLC is proposing to install natural gas within the City of Fredericksburg Public Rideaway. Because this is a new company, it does require in ordinance in the form of a franchise agreement. As the mayor mentioned, this item was presented to council on April the third, excuse me, April the fourth, as the first reading. In addition to that, it was advertised in the local newspaper on May third of this month. Richard Bard is here with Universal Natural Gas. Chief Fizzle is also in the back, here to answer any questions you might have. Be happy to turn it over to Richard if he has anything else to present, or just open up the questions. City staff is recommending approval of this franchise agreement, but we know there might be some questions that y'all want to ask before that, before considering this item.
Counsel, any questions?
Chris, is that standard twenty years?
Yes, sir.
So we had a twenty-year lease before this?
Atmos Energy, which is the, I guess, a franchise agreement that I would kind of compare this one to, is a twenty-year agreement.
So if they want a rate increase, they still have to come back to the council then? Did they do that without any?
Honestly, I'm not sure how the rate increase component, Richard might be able to speak to that. They are regulated by the Railroad Commission, so I don't know if that is a factor into that increase in rates and so forth.
Yeah. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Appreciate you guys taking this agenda item up again this morning. To answer your question, our rates are regulated by the Railroad Commission. We can't just raise them. We have to go through a rate case and get approval with them before we can do any sort of adjustment. That's a long process. We don't like to do it then.
Richard, I understand you, you're not headquartered here, so this is kind of a remote install for you. So a couple of questions. One is, at the major connection points, do you have any sort of monitoring, leak detection monitoring? And the second question is, if there is an incident, what's the response time? Do you have somebody in the city proper that can respond and isolate?
So we do have leak detection on all, on our equipment, leak patrol, all that stuff. We have monitoring devices on our metering and regulation station, which regulates higher pressure gas than distribution gas. All that we would be running within the city limits is distribution gas and distribution lower pressures, basically the gas that goes to your home. All that is leak detected and leak monitored. We do surveys on them all the time. We have local contracts with local contractors, who, if there was an emergency, could respond. Our response time is typically an hour or less. That's our own internal requirements and regulated by the Railroad Commission as well. And then we have company representation local in the San Antonio, North San Antonio area, West Austin area, that we would dispatch in an emergency situation, in addition to our emergency contract.
Any other question?
Have we received any input from the public? Has anyone written in to the city?
No, ma'am. I have not received any comments.
I guess one last question. I can make this question for you is, by passing this and agreeing, allowing this to take place, is there a liability on the city if there is an incident of some sort?
No, the city's immune to any related disaster.
This is the second reading, so I have one more read.
No, no. This is it today, Tony. We can approve this franchise agreement today.
Correct. I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five, Branding University National Natural Gas, and this successor's twenty-year agreement.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the adoption of this ordinance authorizing this franchise agreement with Universal. Any further questions or discussion? All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item seven B, fiscal year twenty twenty-three mid-year budget amendment. First, a presentation, then we'll consider the adoption of an ordinance, adopting and approving these amendments for the fiscal year, and making the amended appropriations. Ms. Wareham?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Krista Wareham, Director of Finance. Before we get into the listing of our budget, proposed budget amendments, I'd just like to do a short presentation just to talk about our procedure that we go through and the reasons why we do budget amendments. So this morning, I'd like to just cover our goals that we have going into our mid-year financial review, a little bit of background information about the amendment process, our procedures for mid-year review, the financial update, and then also we'll go through the budget amendments, which are our findings during our review. So first of all, we want to make sure we ensure that we have open communication with all the department staff on any budgetary concerns that may have an adverse effect on the budget. We reinforce budget monitoring and departmental accountability. We present the financial information to staff and to council. And then at the end of the process, we have budget recommendations that are provided. And those budget amendments are for, in response to urgent or unforeseen events that happened since we adopted the budget. So the mid-year review is intended to measure budget performance by using the first six months of actual, along with prior year trends, to project year-end results. As part of the review, staff identified certain accounts that have material relationships to the budget amounts. Under provisions of Texas state law and the city's operating procedures, the operating budget may be adjusted or amended. So finance meets with each department, and we review the revenues and the expenditures, and we do projections to see if there's any line items that would be exceeding the budget. We look at key revenues such as sales tax, property tax, utility revenues, and other revenues that are higher, on the higher values. We also look at wage categories to make sure that if we do have, if it looks like we have savings in those categories, we look at what positions are open and verify the timing on those positions to see if we're going to have savings or if we've got an employee that's getting ready to get started. And on capital line items, department heads communicate timing on delivery and payment. Supply-demand issues may cause budgeted amounts in capital line items to get carried from one fiscal year to the next. Budget amendments are provided by the department and reviewed by finance and the city manager prior to submitting to city council. This next slide is just showing our general fund revenues. I'm not sure how clear it looks for you in the audience, but this is our general fund revenues. So we've got sales tax, property tax, our intercompany, which is our in lieu of taxes, intergovernmental, and then franchise tax. We are at fourteen point three million on a budget of twenty-one point nine. So our revenues for general fund are in good shape. The next slide we're going to look at is enterprise fund revenues, our top, our utility revenues, actual versus budget. I've got electric water, sanitation, and drainage listed, for a total of thirteen point four million on a budget of twenty-eight point seven. So we're slightly under budget mid-year, but we intend to make that up as we commit to the hotter months of the year. Expenses year-to-date, we have it listed by expense categories such as personnel, maintenance operations, capital, debt requirement. Our actual expense is thirty-four point three million on a budget of seventy-six point seven million. And a lot of that variance you'll see is in our capital line item. So as I stated earlier, we may have some capital line items that go into next year's budget if they don't get completed this year. The mid-year, we are ahead on our revenues, and we are below budget on our expenses. And mid-year discussions went very well. We will continue to monitor revenues, expenses, operations services, capital, economic trends, and performance measures to be able to ensure timely corrective action and operational improvements. Staff recommends that city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three proposed budget amendments, which we'll cover as Exhibit A, when it is impacted.
So could you go back, excuse me, to the previous one, the year-to-date, where we are? I know you said we were under and ahead.
So our revenues are thirty-six million, wait, thirty-six point four million, and expenses are thirty-four point three. So we have-
Gerald, can you read that?
No. Did we get this?
Make that bigger?
No.
This wasn't in the packet? Okay. I'll just make the recommendation that we get this in the packet in the future, because it's impossible for me to read here. I take everything you said as true, Krista, and I know the work that went into this. It's just, we can't read that. Okay, so did you hear what she said about the difference? So any other questions? Any questions, counsel, about her presentation? Okay. So what we received was this, the specific budget amendments.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I, and the, a lot of the slides that I show, we're showing with the financial information, those are being pulled from our new OpenGov software. So I will check with them and see if there's any way, as I'm doing downloads, how, if I can see if I can get that a little bit clearer, darker.
Yeah. Maybe they have a large type version for aged mayors.
And Mayor, Council, we can go through all of these amendments individually, or we can just answer questions you may have about the information provided in your packet, your preference.
So let me just ask you, if we get to the end of the year, and I know history repeats itself quite often, where you go ahead and spend the rest of the money before the end of the year, but if we have an excess, where does it go?
It goes, it goes toward our-
The job reserve?
It goes toward the reserve if that's lacking, or fund about- It goes toward the reserve if that's lacking or fund balance if if those reserves have been met. And Krista might be able to add to that, but that's where that goes.
Yes, at the beginning of the budget season, we always look at what our beginning fund balance is, and then we project our revenues and our expenses, and then we hold back reserves on the funds that are required, the three-month expenditures, and then that's what we're projecting our ending fund balance to be. But once we get through the fiscal year, we'll update those estimates with our actuals and then be able to report where we actually ended on our fund balance. Thank you for your notes. They are so helpful and clear, and I didn't have any questions after reading them. If I did, looking at the numbers, it was answered in the notes, so appreciate you for that.
So I'll ask a new guy a question. You know what? Municipal court remodel shows 155K amendment is, and I see some of the notes here, technology, security, and so forth. Was that just a, was it increased scope, increased cost? Or where did that come from? You want to throw that here?
It was a combination of those things. So the scope did change since we we approved the budget or since the budget was approved. It started out at 200,000. And since that time, additional scope was added, and there were some additional cost increases due to construction.
I want to note for the public who may be looking at this, this document, that the majority of the amendment amount is reflected in the purchase of the old Turner Hall, 845,000, which is not something we were actively considering at budget root. So I've certainly heard from quite a few people that they believe that that was a smart move on the council's part, which I'm ratified by, and the use to be determined.
And that will be part of budget discussions, I hope, in the near future.
It will be.
What would the heck we're going with it? Thank you.
And the the comment, of course, the council appeared, heard from a staff yesterday. We talked about this specifically, and I was briefed on this item for the meeting. We're still just being bound up by the cost of things that are going so fast, supply problems, if things that people are facing in their personal lives, we we face on a bigger scale because a truck is a couple hundred, 300 grand or something like that. By the time it gets ordered and all the parts and so forth, am I saying that correctly? It's just, it's a roll of the dice every time now, seems like. And that's, that is more intense than it used to be, am I correct, because of international events? Did I say that pretty correct? Yeah, it's difficult to anticipate and getting hard. All the more reason for us to do our best work as we come up on this budget process this year. All right, any other questions about the specifics?
Yes, sir.
Make the motion.
Concerning, like the truck, the bucket truck increased quite a bit. Should we put a contingency in the budget for things like that? Since we know, especially now, that things do go up?
Yeah, certainly. I think moving forward, we will look at that.
Yeah, but what's the amount?
Probably a percentage. The biggest challenge we face is even delivery times. So like this bucket truck, we issue a PO tomorrow, assuming that it's approved by Council today. It's about a 20, about a two-year, 24-month lead time. And so we've got to show those funds until we actually get the invoice from the company and take delivery of that vehicle. So hopefully, you know, that's one of the biggest challenges, you know, we're, because we're looking not only at getting that truck next year, but future years. So replacement of other equipment, we're looking even further ahead, knowing that we're not going to get it for a couple of years after order. So those are the challenges definitely that we deal with, yes, sir.
During during the budget process, we did project about, probably about a 25% increase in a lot of this equipment. But we needed to project a little bit higher. Garrett mentioned just yesterday when we met Mayor that we've even ordered equipment that we can't get a response from the company we ordered it from, and we've had to go to another source. So again, there's a huge backlog when it comes to to equipment, long lead times, and the price is continuing to go up at this point. So give me a read on how you think we did in the budget process last year with regard to this mid-year amendment. We're looking at roughly an impact of a million two. Can you give me a sense of what historically this has been?
I I think this is very good personally. And again, the majority of that expense was the Turner Hall property at 846,000. So when you look at the remainder of the budget and general fund and impact specifically, I think we were very conservative. We had some items on the water side, even the electric side, some of the enterprise funds that impact the overall budget, but they're not general fund related. So I I would say at this point, we're doing better than we did last year and the last several years at this point. And again, this is something that, you know, we take a look at continuously, and we're very conservative in our approach. And I can tell you, we're getting even more conservative when it comes to expenses. We take a look at these things. We're developing more policies and finance to have more control over these non-budgeted expenses. And again, as Krista mentioned just right up front, typically these items that are showing up on this mid-year budget amendment are either emergencies or we have found the savings in the budget to cover that that cost if it's for an item that's not budgeted. So I would say we're at a very good point right now. That's my personal opinion.
That's what I asked for. Thank you. Before I entertain a motion on this, if Krista can think further.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion. We approve the amendment to the budget. 2023-06, the ordinance.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this amendment as per the ordinance named. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. McCamie, I want to ask, make sure I'm not doing anything inappropriate here. I would like to honor the presence of a person here who wants to make a public comment about an executive session item, specifically the STR thing. Could I move that up to this point just to receive her comment?
Yes.
Okay.
You can, you can receive citizen comment under current state law, just about any.
Okay, that's good to hear. Nancy, why don't you come on up? And Nancy Stevens appeared before the council at a previous meeting. I believe it was the joint meeting where we met with B and Z, one of them.
Yes, it was four weeks ago.
Okay. I know you're passionate, and I know you have a, an issue. We we limit to three minutes if you do.
I would just like to have everyone look at this one more time. I was with you four weeks ago. The person who is next door to me and sits actually beside me, but their property will be literally in front of my home, and that an STR can be 15 feet, will be 15 feet, and mine's 25. And every home on this side of the street in my neighborhood are little bitty homes. The home that he has purchased in the orange, the home is 1,000 square feet. He's proposing over where I have an arrow and an X in the orange for a two-story that would be over 3,000 square feet and sit 15 feet from the street where all of the homes along here are all 25 feet set back. I am begging you to please stop this STR. There are, as you can see at the bottom, 87 units in my one block. Alan Keller is beside me that has migrant workers, and there are six men there two or three weeks, and they change, and all of their cars are on the street. And then you can see the duplex across from me, sorry. Alan Keller up here in the top right, the duplex that was the drug house has now become a STR. All of these beautiful lots that are over an acre have all filled up with STRs. You can see every unit, 87 units between Mesquite and Olive in my block. I love Fredericksburg. My husband is working in Dallas. That's why he's not here, or he wasn't here last month. The gentleman who has purchased this property here at 513 Olive has already put in an application as of the first week of May for a subdividing. If he subdivides or replats, then he will be able to build another STR in the backyard of Ms. Ruth's old home. These houses and and these, this whole neighborhood was never meant for that population density. The screaming, the yelling, the mainly the women, every now, in and out every night, is more than I've been able to deal with, but at least they're 50 and 75 feet away from me. This will be five feet away from me. I am asking that you stop the STRs. I know they've made a wonderful way to make money in Fredericksburg, but I think that there's homeowners that want to live here, and I will not live here. I will sell my home and I will live somewhere else. My husband built it. It is beautiful. We love it. We are involved in young life, and we dance, and we have church life, and we have many friends, and we've been here 24 years. I don't feel that this is fair, that it's common sense, that it's reasonable from the tipping point of homeowners and the amount of short-term rentals that are here now. I'm begging you to please stop this. It's probably impossible. I've spoken to Anna, who's been wonderful. I've spoken to Shelby, and he has the rights to build there if it's subdivided. I'm asking you to somehow, I'm hoping that there's some way that this can be stopped. Does anybody have any questions about the actual outlay of my block?
Ma'am, I'd like to remind the council, there's no response to citizen comment allowed in. We can't respond. We can't respond to that.
Oh, no, no. I just wondered if there was any question. Oh, you can't ask questions.
They can interact with you during the meeting.
I'm sorry. I thought you could ask questions.
Sorry. We can follow up later if we like.
Yes, I'm just asking for determination today or whenever we do those. Thank you so much. I appreciate what you've done last year. But what's happened is the zoning from Zone 1 that's protected. All of these people have come out and have started building STRs in Zone 2, and we're in Zone 2. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to go to, again, to be considerate of someone who knows here, and I can't always do this, but I can this morning. I see Daryl Woodworth is here, and his issue is the item 8C, Council. It's the discussion consideration of annual parades, and I don't think this will take us long. Andrew? Daryl has been volunteering to do the July 4th parade for years and years and may have a comment.
I'll allow Andrew to speak first.
Okay, all right.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Andrea Schmidt, Parks Department. This morning, I'm bringing you approval of the three parades that we hold here annually in Fredericksburg. This is something that we do on an annual basis because it's not budgeted for, but it does involve a lot of city staff time, which some of these departments are here in case you have questions for them later. What makes us a little different is that we're also asking not only for the approval of the three parades, but for the Fourth of July parade, the Gillespie County Fair parade on August 25th, and the Light the Night Christmas parade on December 1st. But we're also asking for the city to officially sponsor the July 4th parade. As as the mayor mentioned, it's been run by a volunteer committee, and they have requested this. That way, we, as the city, can put it on our city insurance. Now, to put it on our city insurance, there are some other requirements. We do need to get a engineered traffic safety plan that'll be approved by TechDOT. That traffic safety plan can be reused for the other parades, so that'll be a one-time cost. And then there'll be some additional funds possibly for the actual traffic control safety barrier barriers. So that's why you see that that number, $65,000 would be worst-case scenario was included in the budget amendments today. So at this time, we are, and as you mentioned, Daryl's here, as well as Penny McBride is also here that does the Light the Night Christmas parade. So we would ask you to consider approving the July 4th Gillespie County Fair and Light the Night parade for 2023 and sponsoring the July 4th parade on an annual basis. So we can answer any questions that you may have now.
I know the July 4th parade is a separate issue because we're being asked to sponsor it.
Correct.
The fair parade and the Light the Night parade, we prefer those every year?
Yes, we've been bringing those every year, all three parades to Council.
So as far as being a sponsor, the insurance is really the main?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Andrea, do we have enough barricades to block off all the streets for the routes?
Let Jared respond to that one.
So so under the current plan, yes, as Andrea mentioned, Kim Lee Horn is developing a new plan that based on the initial concepts we've seen, it would require additional barricades. So that's where the additional cost is coming from.
Any of the equipment that we're purchasing as part of the Eclipse, would that help with the parades or no? Is that separate? Aren't there some?
Well, I mean, it could be used for both.
Okay.
Again, the key here is we're developing one plan that would be used for all three parades.
Andrea, I think you touched on this, but because it's a highway, TechDOT's involved, and so there are now requests that we have to place permissions, I guess, versus in the past, we didn't need to do that.
That's correct. In in order for the insurance, the city's insurance to cover it, we need to get written TechDOT approval.
Garrett, is the $36,000 for traffic control operations, does that cover the cost of the police officers as well?
So that's the worst-case scenario cost. In fact, the $12,000 per parade, that's where the 36,000 comes from. That would actually be to hire a outside company, a traffic control company, to come in and do it. So our hope would be that we could do this in-house, again, just buying some additional barricades and signage.
Right.
So basically, the city pays for all those parades. It's the cost of the city.
Yes, sir.
Did you want to consider all four of these things under one motion? Because the consideration of the city sponsoring the July 4th parade, it may be a different discussion. What is your preference, Andrea?
We can do it all as one, or as two, depending on.
Or separate?
Yes, separate, whatever the recommendation is from Council.
Council, I just want to make you aware, and you may already be aware, that for years and years, Daryl Woodworth and a small group of volunteers, including Debbie Ray and Lyndon Evans and Joe Kamla, and who am I leaving out? Okay, and y'all remember lovely Helen McDonald, who did, who helped out for many years and helped with the patriotic program at the Adelsof following the parade. Our gratitude for all those years that you've done this volunteer, they came to visit with us several months ago and said that that it was getting to the point where they needed the imprimatur of the city to sponsor this July 4th parade, insurance, and also just the the logistics and organization under the auspices of the city. So that's why this is. I know that the fair parade, I guess they pretty much take care of themselves, and Penny, you take care of yours, right? I mean, of all the things that that we're looking at. But we, this is a great event for our community, in my opinion, and I appreciate Daryl and and his crew hanging on for all the years they did. But I I believe it's time for us to take that one. So that's part of the consideration of sponsoring the parade. Any questions or comments about that issue? We can take this whole thing at once if you like.
Mayor, I agree with you. I think by doing this, we also take any personal liability that Daryl and his committee would incur by sponsoring the parade. So I think we definitely should do it.
So we need a motion to approve all the parades.
We can, we can move the whole item C.
I would think so. So I make that motion.
Second.
I have motion second to approve item C, this sponsorship. Approving Fourth of July Fair Parade, Christmas Parade, and sponsoring Fourth of July Parade. Any further comments?
That's it. Thank you.
Any further comments, Council? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you, Daryl.
And please convey our thanks to your people again. I know you are, but but I'm glad that this is happening. Thank you. All right, item 8A, consider and possible action regarding an amendment to the Lower Colorado River Authority Contract for Emergency Radios. Mr. Visel. to the Lower Colorado River Authority Contract for Emergency Radios, Mr. Visel.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This morning, we have an amendment to the LCR, LCRA contract for the proposed, or proposed amendment for the LCR contract for accounting wide radio system for fire and EMS. So in this, in this proposal, an amendment has been proposed to replace one of our tower sites. When you look at the project originally, we had a tower site which was relatively close to Tierra Linda Fire District, which would help cover those, that area in the Tierra Linda District, as well as some of the Harper area. So when we, when we, when Kerrville decided to go to the 700 system, which will allow us to talk with them, they actually installed a tower relatively close to Tierra Linda. So we are proposing to move that tower site to a different site closer to Harper, which will allow better coverage for the school, inside the school, and the actual Harper area. So in this amendment is going to require an increase in the monthly fee that we pay the tower company for the lease, the lease of those tower sites. All the equipment and everything involved is already, is still in the amendment. That has not changed as far as equipment that we have to purchase to place on the tower, but the location, location is moving. Originally, that cost per month was thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. We are, this amendment proposes to increase that to twenty-two hundred dollars a month with an increase of around ten thousand dollars a year above what the original amendment was, and that's the proposal for the amendment that we have here. In addition to that, there's a forty dollar per month fee for a secondary router in case one of them goes out, which is about four hundred and eighty dollars. So those are the two increases in the proposed amendment. And at this time, if I could turn it over to Reagan, I'm gonna let him provide you all with an update of where we are with that purchase, that actual purchase, and when we can potentially expect to be online with the new radio system.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So just real quick, like Chief Visel said, we benefit the, get a lot of benefits from this new tower site since Kerrville went online originally. Can y'all see that okay? Is that, this is what we currently have for the county that covers Gillespie County right now. We have five towers. We have the DOS Tower, the Fredericksburg Tower, the Lookinbach Tower, and then the Smoky Mountain Tower, which that's in Kerr County, but it covers Kerr County and Tierra Linda very well. And then it also has one in Lano County, which covers the Willow City and the northeast side. Originally, it's real hard to see. There's a little green dot on the bottom left of the map, kind of Tierra Linda area. If you can see I-10 and the county line, there's a green dot. That was the original tower site that we were gonna have under this radio system. But due to Kerrville getting there before we did, we don't need it anymore. We need to move it. So our next major issue was the Harper area. And this one probably shows it a little better. That's the proposed, the black dots, proposed old site, and then the green or the blue turquoise is the new tower site. As you can see, it covers Harper and the western part of the county, which is our next highest priority for radio coverage in the county. So if I need to switch back and forth on those two, it kind of helps. So basically, it just kind of takes the pretty pink away, which is all indoor coverage away from Tierra Linda, and it moves it toward Harper. But we've done radio checks and everything out Tierra Linda, down in the very bottom, in cars, on handhelds, and the Smoky Mountain Tower covers Tierra Linda, which that was our main focus of that tower site being there in the first place.
So does the Lano Tower take care of the northeastern part of the county?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay. You mentioned a redundant router. Is that something that we didn't have in the past? So we didn't have that?
Correct. So that was, that was something that had to be added to this tower site.
So if we lost that router, the only router there, then we would have lost which towers?
It would just be, it's a backup, is all it is.
Right.
So, yeah, the only tower that would go down, if both of them goes down, is that tower site.
Okay.
So I assume LCRA installs that tower?
Yes.
Right.
The tower's already built. It's just hanging the equipment on it.
Oh.
So it's a lease from SBA, which is a tower company. And then, as we sit, all the radios are in Austin at the radio shop. We are just waiting for the chargers and the speaker mics for the handhelds. The radio channel frequencies have been approved by all the county fire chiefs and just waiting for them to get in line, to get everything programmed. Once they're programmed, we should get an install date. They're looking at possibly getting it programmed around June 1st, and then we'll get a install, and then each department will have the radios installed in their fire trucks at their fire station.
Reagan, let me ask you, we always look at this, this increase, is that just the city side or is that a joint with the county?
It's split fifty-fifty.
Yeah, but I mean, is our amount gonna be twenty-two hundred or is it for?
No, it's the, whatever the budget amendment.
It would be, it would be an additional ten thousand, a little over ten thousand dollars a year for this change, and then half of that would come from the county. Half of that.
And Krista, do we still have a fund balance from where we got the radios from ARPA funds? Do we, have we allocated all of that already? So it's just coming out from, this is gonna come from general fund? Actually, it'd be general fund and EMS, split between the two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve this amendment. Any further questions, discussion? Hold on favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all being here. All right. Item 8B is to take action on the extension of the CVB lease. Andrea?
Good morning, Mayor and Council, again. This morning, I'm bringing you the extension of the Convention and Visitors Bureau lease. Currently, the lease we have has expired with them, so we've been operating on month-to-month by the old lease. We've been working with Brady and his staff and his board over the last few months, and our city attorney to get a new lease written up. The new lease would be for twenty years. It would begin on October 1st of 2023 and end December 31st of 2043. Annual rent would be twelve hundred dollars to the city. We could terminate the lease with a one-year notice for another governmental function. The new lease would have the Convention and Visitors Bureau handling most of the routine maintenance, janitorial services, restroom issues, trash pickup, and the city would still be responsible for major issues, since we are the owner of this building, including foundation repairs or major roof leaks or parking lot repaving and that type of thing. The original lease that was signed with the chamber back in 2003 was a twenty-four-year lease, so this is about the same period of time. Brady is here, in case you have any questions that he may be able to answer, but would like for you to approve the new lease agreement with the Fredericksburg Convention and Visitors Bureau as presented effective day 1st of this year.
Andrea, who takes care of the yard?
The CVB will. They have a contract with a landscaping company.
Who takes care of the landscape? Or the yard?
The city? No, they have a landscaping company that handles that.
Just remember, Stephen used to do it for you.
Thank you. Are, what are the changes?
So that, there was a lot of legal questions on some of the legal language that was in the contract, so those have been resolved. We also, the city was handling the janitorial and the restroom repairs, so that's now been transferred over to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So those are some of the good ones. The amount, I think, in the original lease agreement was like five hundred dollars, and now it's gone to twelve hundred dollars.
The day-to-day relationship, the operations, stay pretty much the same?
Yes, they should.
I'll take a motion.
I move we approve the lease with the Convention and Visitors Bureau effective October 1st.
Second. Motion second to approve this lease. Any further questions, discussion? Hold on favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Brady. Appreciate your hanging in there, getting this done.
For the next twenty years.
Glad I'll start now on the renewal. I'd make the discussion regarding the creation of a public housing authority. Council, I ask that this remain on the agenda for any further developments in real time, meeting to meeting, because I know this has been brought up many times, not as specific, but the issue of housing is something that continues to be an item of discussion all over town from people who hire people, people who are making decisions, et cetera. So I just wanted to keep this on the agenda for any further questions or new revelations that you've had, where you are, what we need to find out, where we need to go. We are still sort of open-ended on this in terms of finding, coming to a determination about a, the specific idea of the creation of a public housing authority. I will tell you that, as I mentioned to you earlier, that I did some homework on this proposal to look into the McAllen model and learn that that's not a housing authority. It is a nonprofit that is funded by considerable private foundation, and they do really, really good work in McAllen for housing for individuals that qualify for mortgages, actually. And they have their own mortgage division that's worth eighty-five million dollars and lots of staff who guide people from application to learning basic personal finance, saving money for it down, how to take care of a home, all this sort of thing, which sounds great. I'd love to see something like that in Fredericksburg. All we need is about ninety million dollars and ten people to work for them and lots of land that we're looking to put housing on, none of which we have at this point. But a housing authority is a different issue, and I just wanted you to know. You probably knew that, but that was my education in the last couple of weeks to find out that this wonderful model that I've been hearing about is not indeed a housing authority. I still have a lot of questions about this, but I assure you that I am doing my homework and doing research. Some of our neighboring towns, some of the smaller towns around us, have had housing authorities for quite some time, and I'm wanting to discuss with them to find out one question. What has this solved in your community? What did, what did this do that, that helped? Did it accomplish what you hoped it would accomplish? So with that, Council, I'm going to ask that, we have a couple of people who would like to speak on this and public comment. I'm going to ask that they do that, and then we continue the discussion among us, if you will. James McDonald?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am a resident of the city of Fredericksburg. The devil is in the details. I'll come back to that. The housing coordinator position was funded by the city, the county, FISD, Gillespie County Economic Development Corporation, Hill Country Memorial, Side Street Hospitality, Chase Bank, Boot Ranch, HEB, Fisher &amp; Weezer, Texas Wine Collective, Happy State Bank, and Hill &amp; Vine. Where are those partners in this conversation? What portion of Vince's report had they agreed to finance or contribute to? Why does this conversation seem to be lying, seem to be laying at the city's feet alone? I'm asking that if the city decides to continue these discussions on affordable housing, that they require the first ten percent of development funding to be received from private donations prior to any binding vote on behalf of taxpayers. I think that's a fair request. One thing that I have noticed that has been oddly missing from these conversations are input from Burnett and Mason Housing Authorities. So they're the closest to us, right? I talked to both of the directors there. Oddly enough, they had not heard from anyone in Fredericksburg when I talked to them earlier this month. These organizations don't have a bunch of staff. These directors, two directors that I talked to, are the janitors, coffee makers, and directors. The director in Mason has been there for twenty years. The one in Burnett has been there for forty years. I would say they've got some experience. Out of the over a hundred units they have presided over for decades, guess how many teachers, nurses, police officers, or firefighters they have housed? The answer was shocking to me. Please dig into the details on this. A public housing authority is not the Shangri-La. It seems that the desire is to do something rather than nothing. When there are hard things to deal with, oftentimes, the answer is do nothing. There's been much said about our local government's lack of action on the affordable housing issue, and I would comment that the form of government that we have in this country was designed to act slowly. If every elected official was immediately able to institute his or her harebrained ideas, well, we'd have a whole lot more to pray for, wouldn't we? When an issue is mulled over for many years, that usually means that there isn't an easy solution. There are over a thousand, a thousand new units under development in Fredericksburg right now. The private market is working, and I would ask this council to please be patient before you bind the taxpayers to more taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Kathy O'Neil. Please identify yourself as a resident of the city.
Good morning, Council. I am a resident of the city. I'm back. A few years ago, I was in the council. We had the same issues we have now. We've had many years with regard to the lack of affordable housing for people who want to live here and work here, all categories of workers. We knew then that we didn't know how to fix this problem. So we formed a task force. Just want to give you a little background. Made up of all members of this community. And we knew that as a task force, we didn't know how to fix it, but what we did know was that we could find somebody to come into our city and guide us who did know about housing. We asked the community to become involved. The major employers did just that, the city, the county, the hospital, all of them, that James mentioned, from large employers to small, spoke with their money and pledged funds to hire an expert. We developed a job description. We put it out there in the ether. We got several applications. We decided to interview two of the applicants, which we did. to interview two of the applicants, which we did. We went over to the auditorium over at CBB, all of these members of the community who are on the task force, and we listened as the two candidates spoke and answered questions. When they were finished and they left the room, we looked at each other and we said, "We have struck gold." We were ecstatic that we were able to find someone, Vince Michelle, who had expansive expertise in housing. He would know what to do. He assessed our community, told us how many thousands of commuter employees we had here, workers. He wrote a report, and now he's recommending that we establish a housing authority to address this issue. We don't, still don't know how to fix it ourselves. We have to listen to experts. I would plead with you to follow the expert advice of Vince Michelle and to listen to the community who has been speaking over the last several years. Establish a housing authority, appoint the, the board, members of the board, and keep Vince Michelle on board to advise them as they get started. And this is very important work. It's time to move on this. I think it's good that, Mayor, you're doing the research. That'll be extremely helpful, but we have an expert here who is we've paid for, who's been willing to help us, and I hope that we'll listen to him. Thank you.
That was your time. Counsel, any comments?
Yes, where we left it two weeks ago, we were gonna, we asked that we have a county-city meeting. Where is that?
The county commissioners and judge have agreed to meet in a joint session for an informational meeting about how's a public housing authority and what that would mean to our county and what it might solve. But we just rece- I just received their agreement a few days ago, and we've not set the meeting. In the meantime, we've, we've got at least two other joint meetings that we're trying to work out with the county. And so I'm open to suggestions about scheduling, because we're about to get into a heavy meeting schedule. But I would still like to see that, and I would say the update is that they're all agreeable.
And this has been said so many times, but the housing authority is not the one-size that solves everything for our community. And so I wonder if, if we extend or expand the agenda item, if we're going to keep this on the agenda going forward to something about housing in more general terms. Looking back at the fourteen-year-old 2009 task force recommendations, they looked at a community development operation, and that 501(c)(3) is something I think we should also be looking into. So we can add that, and also I would request that we can, if we need to get people in here from other entities, I don't know if you want to do that as part of the county-city meeting or what, but I, I don't have anything more to say. If we're gonna just bring our research every two weeks, I don't know what direction there.
Well, that's sensitive to slow walking up to the point that it looks like we're just stalled. That's not what I'm doing. I am concerned that the, I want to know this. What would a housing authority solve with regard to the need that we have in workforce housing? I understand that, that the, you set up the entity, and it can become a help, but I want to know something more specific. I want to know a hard plan for how a housing authority gets us to a solution for the thing that we keep hearing that we heard from Ms. McBride, we heard from Dr. Thompson, we heard from other people, the ones who've helped fund the, the housing coordinator. I'm looking for a specific solution, not, a housing authority can address this issue to some degree, but what would it do? How do we get there? That's what I need. So with regard to hearing and understanding and listening and honoring the recommendations that we're getting from the housing coordinator, and I take all that into mind, and glad that that's the case, but I have to make a decision, and I have to be on board with feeling like this is solving something and not creating something that doesn't. And I'm learning from what I consider to be a misstep on my part with STRs, because in 2013, we passed an ordinance to make them approved in R1, thinking that what we would do would be make it possible for people to afford their very, very high mortgages in R1 neighborhoods and run a B&amp;B, live there, rent out their rooms, rent out a, a utility or an accessory or something. And we got caught, in my opinion, with our, well, we just got caught in, in an unintended circumstance with the STR issue that we're faced in this community. How do I, how do I connect that to this? I didn't do enough homework to find out what could be the unintended consequences five years from now, seven years from now, ten years from now, that really do impact the quality of life of this community, and that's my job. So I'm not going to get in a hurry about it.
So this is the area I probably know the least about, so I will raise my hand and say that. One of the things that I've done in the past in my professional career when I'm faced with a challenging decision that's very impactful, Mr. Mayor, is to do a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And you're looking at the model of what does that mean? And I don't want to be emotional about a, a housing authority or, Emily, you had some other models that potentially we look at. I would recommend, or, and I'll take the lead if you want, is to do a SWOT analysis on each of those models, what they look like, for no- nothing else to educate me, and then we can help educate the community in, in, just an offer to throw it out there.
Please do.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. Let's move to item 8E, discuss the upcoming city boards and commission appointments, and take action on Mayor Pro Tem appointment. Counsel, I have heard from you about, you know, one thing, let me pause just a second here. Yes, excuse me for, for regressing just a bit, to make sure that I have a, a comment into the record from, about the previous item from Charlie Keeney. He suggests it might be a good thing to see what the legislature may pass into law in regards to a public facility, as he understands that the housing authority will form partnerships with this PFC to achieve this end goal of providing affordable housing, and hopes that taxpaying citizens have a clear understanding of this process and how it may affect their property taxes and the quality of life there. I'll try to get those comments on there. All right, so I've heard from, well, let's just put it this way. Ms. Kirchner, would you state your preference?
Boards. I would like to continue serving as county liaison to the Commissioners Court. City liaison to the Commissioners Court, sorry.
County liaison, that's it, county liaison. And the upcoming Eclipse?
Eclipse Task Force, I can continue that, and the Conference of Plan Advisory Committee.
So y'all want to move that at one time, or? Okay. So let me write this down. Ms. Kirchner, county, Eclipse, and Comp Plan. I'm happy to continue with the FISD, and workforce housing. I'll take workforce housing. Unless you want it.
No.
All right, that leaves Nature Center, CBB.
I would like to raise my hand for CBB.
Randy's stating a preference for CBB. Tony, where are you?
I'm right now with Mark.
You happy with that?
Yeah.
Continue.
I'd like to continue with EDC Airport and Mayor Pro Tem.
Get paid more than I am for that.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem? All right, I'm not finding my list here. Am I missing anything?
Yeah, there's two city appointees to the Conference of Plan Advisory, and that's Tony and me right now. And then Tony's also, aren't you dispatch and communications task force?
Dispatch, yeah, dispatch. Can you do that one?
Sure.
Aren't you the city rep, dispatch, city council rep? Dispatch. And there were two on the comp plan?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
And then workforce housing, too.
And two as well. Okay, Bobby, you join me.
Sounds like Randy.
He's doing a SWOT.
We're doing a SWOT that needs to be here. Yeah, well, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't have to be, yeah.
No.
We're missing
Chairman.
Chairman as well.
A city.
Chamber.
Chamber. That is big. Randy will take the Chamber and CBB. Same building.
Means good.
Next door. Close.
Same block.
All right. I need someone else to join up with the
Tony's on it now.
Sorry?
Tony is on it with me now.
Oh, I missed that. All right, so here's what I have. Ms. Kirchner, county, Eclipse Workforce, Comp Plan. Bobby, EDC Airport, Mayor Pro Tem. Tony, Mark Lots, Dispatch. Randy, Chamber, CBB. I'm FISD, half of the workforce housing with Bobby. Does that cover it?
No, you listed me as workforce. So just to even things out, I was saying I can drop workforce and the Nature Center, because I have five right now. So
Well, workforce is
You said workforce, I mean. I was just making sure.
Oh, sorry. County, Eclipse, and Comp Plan.
Great.
Okay. Gerald, FISD, workforce housing with Bobby, and Nature, I'll take that. Mr. Bradley, Chamber and CBB. Mr. Klein, Mark Lots Dispatch. And Mr. Watson, EDC Airport, Mayor Pro Tem. Cover it?
Your comp plan for Tony.
Yeah, I have you. Okay, sorry. I had it in your
Mark Lots Dispatch.
Okay, you have some work.
Make motion, we approve the appointments, I guess.
Was that cleared up there, boss?
Shelley had that down.
I really messed that up, didn't I, Shelley? Okay, one more time. Ms. Kirchner, county, Eclipse, Comp Plan. Mr. Watson, EDC Airport, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Klein, Mark Lots Dispatch, Comp Plan.
Wait, did I do this? For workforce.
I missed what?
Bobby is on the workforce.
Okay. I've got it in mind.
Shelley chewing right now.
Okay, let's do it this way. County, Emily, Eclipse, Emily, Comp Plan, Emily. Bobby, Comp Plan. No. Airport, I'm making a mistake.
Oh, okay.
EDC Airport, Mayor Pro Tem. And work. Mark Lots Dispatch, Comp Plan, Tony. Chamber, CBB. Randy. The mayor, FISD, workforce. You know, my personality type, I know you all will be surprised, but my personality type is not details. I despise details, so I'm grateful for you and you. All right. Did we butcher that as well as we could? All right, city manager's party.
Wait, do we need to vote on that?
Oh, sorry.
Do we need to do a Mayor Pro Tem separate?
I made a motion.
Second.
Does y'all know what you're voting on?
Yep.
I said second, or whatever the last one said. All the pair of say aye?
Aye.
Mayor.
Can I make, sorry, for Mayor Pro Tem?
We also, I prepared a PowerPoint, but it goes over what other appointments you're gonna have?
Sorry.
Eric, it's not that. Okay, so these are your different appointments coming up, and we're recommending that we appoint these in June, which are your Board of Adjustments, the Historic Review Board, and the Planning and Zoning Board. You also have a couple of other vacancies coming up, and I'll go over those here. Board of Adjustments are three commissioners up for reappointment and one vacancy. CBB has a vacancy. Historic Review Board has three commissioners up for reappointment and a vacancy. Market Square Redevelopment Commission has two vacancies. Planning and Zoning has two vacancies, or, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning has three commissioners up for reappointment. This was what I'll just discuss, but I'll make the changes. These are the different, your appointments, Mayor, that you make for the different council members. And then your Mayor Pro Tem, of course, the charter tells us that we have to do it in the meeting after the election. This is straight from the charter. And so, well, you did most of this already, but the announcements of the mayor's appointments, the city council needs to elect between amongst yourself, the Mayor Pro Tem, and then we're going to set the boarding commission appointments for June the 20th.
Have you heard from most of the people who are up for this?
We have. Hannah will probably answer that one a little better, but everyone she did, she's boarding to me.
Does the Mayor Pro Tem need to be a separate vote?
I think to keep it clean, we should.
I move that Bobby Watson be our Mayor Pro Tem.
Second. Motion second to appoint Bobby as the Mayor Pro Tem. All the pair of say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sir, under vote.
All right. Does that, does that finish that item? Sorry. City manager's party, ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We might be ready for the Mayor Pro Tem. Morton, certainly.
Okay, first item, water supply update. We thought we'd put this on there. We, of course, went into stage four, watering restrictions April 1st. The target average daily percentage reduction in water demand for that stage from stage three is twenty percent. We are right at about seventeen percent. I'll have Chris add a little bit more information to this. We understand we've had a little bit cooler temperatures, a little bit of rainfall, that certainly helps with that. We'll continue monitoring that throughout the summer. I'm feeling a lot better about going into the, the summer with the recent rains that, that we have received. But I also wanted to add, Randy had a question about water revenues. Good question. As we're using less water, what does that, what do those revenues look like? Krista reported, we're about four percent behind revenue for this time of the year, but we really don't catch up until we get into those hotter, drier summer months, so we'll continue to monitor that. We've talked to folks that set the rate, that the rate design for the city, and going back to 2014, 2015, the rate that, the rate design that was established is, results in a very consistent revenue. results in a very consistent revenue, um, throughout the summer, whether it's a hot, dry summer or a wet summer where people aren't using as much water. Uh, but that's something that we're going to evaluate again. Uh, I don't think we need to make a change to the rates, uh, this summer. Um, let's take a look at it, maybe if we have another really hot, dry summer, look at it sometime next year, but right now, we're, we're pretty good about the rates being, uh, being stable and most revenues being stable. Chris, do you want to add anything on the, the water report?
Only thing I would add is, uh, we put together a water report card for the month of April, and they're out on social media, some really good information in there. If you haven't seen that, can pass that along to you. Uh, we'll do that consistently, um, every month, uh, as we continue moving through the summer. Uh, I looked at the offer levels yesterday. I would report that we're still just under seven feet lower and now well-filled before at this time of last year, so, uh, the offer has stabilized some. Uh, in fact, we're about 10 feet higher than we were at this time last month. So, we continue to trend upward, but as we compare to last year, we're still seven feet lower. So, it does take a while to get that offer recharged, uh, and with these rains, hopefully we'll continue to see that. Uh, Old San Antonio Road was, was a little bit, uh, less than that. It's about two feet lower than we were this time last year. Um, and we're basically the exact same as we were a month ago. So, uh, that trend is, hopefully we continue at least stabilizing and continuing to, to, uh, get additional waters recharged into our offer. But I would like to just say, uh, you know, thanks to everybody, uh, and, you know, our customers for helping us conserve water as we move through this. Uh, it's, we've seen a really good response. Now, we've had some rain, hopefully that continues, plus to get another last night. Uh, but do wanna, do wanna show that appreciation to our customers for, uh, helping us get through this as offer continues to charge. Are we happy to answer any questions?
You said it takes a few months for that to really soak in, change the level, saying?
Yes, sir. I would say that it's not an immediate response, it just takes some time.
Chris, I'm curious about enforcement and how that's going. Um, personally, I have taken pictures and emailed them to code enforcement and not received a response, um, for people who are watering on times of day. You know, it's all flooding the street, um, how's that going?
I might turn to either Chief or Anna, I don't know if you have a report on that.
Right, and I know the chief was in the room a little bit earlier. Of course, we have, we have transitioned code enforcement officially to, um, the police department. In fact, they're housed just right behind us, uh, across the hallway. Uh, going back to April 1st, throughout the month of April, uh, we were a little bit more lenient. Uh, we're trying to get people to understand what the new restrictions are, adjust their sprinkler systems, uh, do all of the things. And I think I reported a week after that, um, that driving around, it looks like people are complying. There are still a few that refuse to, uh, follow the restrictions. Um, also remind the council that we have the administrative adjudication process in place that we're running a lot of these violations through, and we're getting a lot more serious about it since the conditions are much more critical now, some going into the summertime. So the first violation results in a $25 fine, the second $250, the third $750. And we feel like that first one, and most people don't show up for hearing, they just pay the fine. That first one is really a warning. Uh, if you continue to do that even past number three, we have the option to terminate service. So, as Chris mentioned, uh, I think most of our customers are complying. Uh, we don't have as many violators. Uh, it appears we're trying to control that through our smart meters, getting in touch with folks, letting them know that they might need to make an adjustment. But I might let the chief add to that if he has seen anything on the, the water violation side. And again, this is, you know, we just did this transition officially in ED last week. So, Chief, do you have anything to add?
I don't have any, good morning, Mayor Council, perhaps for our chief of police. Um, I don't have official numbers. We did run reports on ordinance violations as a whole last week. I will get those numbers to all of y'all, uh, today. And that a way you can look at, uh, the ordinance violations that have been issued, uh, so far this year. Um, we, we are in the middle of that transition. Yes, they physically, code enforcement physically moved to this building, um, last year. One of the code, last week, one of the code enforcement officers was out, uh, at training all week, becoming a certified code enforcement officer. So we have one code enforcement officer in the entire city. We did receive your email, council member, we are working on that, uh, we're aware of that issue. We, we are addressing it, address that. Um, if anybody sees any violations, any staff members, council, the public, um, please email them to me or to any of my team, uh, the three lieutenants, and we will get that to code enforcement and get that, um, addressed immediately. But, uh, we are working on those issues. Um, we're also gonna have, uh, our patrol, as they're patrolling around town in the evenings, um, looking out for these violations, documenting them, and then having that report or that follow-up to the code enforcement officers.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Any other questions about?
So, there's not really a warning, the warning is $25, huh?
Yes, sir. At this point, and again, we, we were very lenient for the first month, uh, of those new restrictions. Again, giving everyone the opportunity to make the adjustments and ask questions, understand what those restrictions meant for them. Um, but after May 1st, um, we are handing out a violation for any kind of water violation.
So let me ask you, I know you can check the meters. Does somebody really do that?
We can, we can do that, and I, I can tell you, we do not actively look for those, you know, major water users and things like that. If there is a, we, we have a, a baseline reading, basically, for each meter, and we see, you know, consumption over that continuous, if someone has a leak, we let them know. We do that on a pretty regular basis, and we're starting to look at that morning, high water, uh, consumption, which means people are watering in the morning like we allowed in stage three. Again, trying to reach out to those folks. We don't use that as a, um, code enforcement tool. We use that as a educational tool, more than anything. Um, we like to have the code enforcement officers or police officers see the violation happening, document that, um, personally, instead of just relying on, uh, water meter data. So again, that's more for just educational purposes. But we have that in place, you know, and enables us to find leaks and things like that, uh, that customers might not know about, leaking toilets, things like that. Been very successful in that regard.
Primarily being used for continuous water consumption, where it never goes to a zero reading for that hour. Uh, that indicates that there's something going on, uh, whether it's a, what's that, leaking toilet or something leaking, uh, every single hour. So utility billing does a good job of reaching out to those customers, notifying that there's continuous consumption of the last two or three days, or even longer in some cases, uh, so that they can get somebody over there to take care of that issue.
So does code enforcement have access to the census data?
Yes, ma'am.
They do?
If they don't have access, they can get it. Not sure if they have access, but any U.C. employee, uh, can get on census analytics software. They do have access. Chris, I've been asked, uh, several people, do we have another source of water other than offer? I think I know the answer, but, uh, Ellenberger offer, uh, we have one well in Ensel and one well in Hickory, but we're all groundwater. If we're looking at another well site, that may be an Ellenberger as well? Likely, yes, sir. Thank you.
I assume the, the county water, like the, uh, one I passed Lookinburg, just recently got a new permit, that all affects us in the city?
Uh, there are a number of wells, um, in the Ellenberger offer, uh, that, it's a straw going at the same body of water, yes, sir. Uh, I can't speak to the, the project out of Lookinburg, though that's in Ellenberger or not. I assume it is. I'm not 100% sure.
So the biggest part of that is, is we can control, but the county can't control that out there?
Uh, the Underground Water Conservation District, uh, depending on the size of the well, they do permit, larger wells. You have to go get a, or well driller has to go get a permit for any well in the county. Depending on the size of that well, uh, Underground Water Conservation District does have regulation on whether it has to be metered or recorded and so forth. The county themselves do not have a regulation other than their subdivision regulations in the Underground Water Conservation District.
This, this is a county question, maybe not appropriate for here, but what's, what's the recourse? If someone out of Lookinburg drills wells without permits?
I, I do have to ask the Underground Water Conservation District.
Wasn't the, is it called Firefox out there?
Fire, Fire Phone.
Didn't they have to come back and get permits that they didn't have?
They did, and it's my understanding that their permitted amount was half of the allotted, um, amount that they applied for. They, if they were allowed one acre foot per acre, the Underground Water Conservation District would use that by half, so it was a half acre foot per acre that they're applying for.
Mayor Council, I, I will say that the, the city of Fredericksburg Municipal Water Supply is the, has the largest impact in terms of, um, water demand and volume pulled from the Ellenberger offer. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we met with a, a regional water expert, Dr. Tim Chin, uh, former professor at Texas A&amp;M. Um, and he had a, just, just curious about what we were doing with respect to water conservation and water supply and water planning and things like that. Um, had a very good conversation with him. He had a, a list of about 10 items that, um, he had questions, uh, about where the city of Fredericksburg was on, um, a, a number of different items. Uh, at the end of the conversation, he said, "We checked 10 out of 10 boxes", and he was very surprised that, uh, we had spent so much time and attention focusing on this over the last decade. And, um, what we decided to do moving forward at some point in summertime is take our success story here in Fredericksburg with respect to water loss, for instance. No one has, uh, water loss as low as ours in the city of Fredericksburg, almost across the state. Ours is around 4% or 5%. The average rural city is over 50% water loss. Uh, so take that success story, um, talk about some of the funding opportunities for water infrastructure coming out of the Texas Legislature. Uh, get some of our surrounding communities, uh, including the county, involve the water district, and have a, um, learning opportunity and a water symposium for all of those different groups and talk about everything water. So we're talking about developing a schedule, we'll have a little bit more detail on that. Uh, but again, as I've mentioned before, it's not just the city of Fredericksburg, there's, it's facing, uh, water issues at this point. It's not even a regional or statewide issue, it's really, uh, a nationwide issue and, and especially some places. Relief, looks like relief is in sight, hopefully for the end of summer. We're transitioning from that La Nina to El Nino, cooler, wetter, hopefully through the fall and into next year, uh, but it's a wait and see at this point. Anything else about water, possibly? Okay, update on future special council meetings. And the mayor mentioned one, the Affordable Housing, um, joint meeting with the, uh, the county. I'll talk about that here in just a minute. But starting with the, uh, first special meeting and workshop, I think the council is referring to this as a retreat, uh, a roll up your sleeves and, uh, spend as much time as we need to discuss a number of different items type, uh, session with the council. Uh, similar to what we did last year about this time after the election with new council. Uh, we had a, uh, council work session where we discussed council rules and procedure, especially regarding council meetings. We made the change from, uh, evening meetings on Monday to, uh, morning meetings on, on Tuesday. Those types of things, um, items included on the agenda and so forth. I would like to, again, similar to last year, I talked about the city's ethics ordinance. I know that there have been some questions, whether it's P and Z or council regarding refusals, conflicts of interest, uh, and so forth. That's something that I would like to work, make, present to the council, just so everyone's clear. Uh, also included in, um, the ethics ordinance is responsibilities of not only council members, but city manager and city staff. The city charter, and we've mentioned this before, um, in fact, um, Councilman Riley during, uh, his, his campaign, one of the, um, candidate forums mentioned that our city charter is a little bit out of date with respect to annexation, I believe. Uh, should have been updated in 2019, it wasn't, so we've talked about getting the city, a, a city charter committee back together to review that. I'll be talking about that a little bit more coming up, but I think it's important for the council to be familiar with the, the charter. And again, the roles and responsibilities of council members, the roles and responsibilities of the city manager, city staff, and so forth. Like to include a very high-level budget and community priorities discussion. We have a number of, uh, large items hanging out there that might require a, um, a bond, uh, issue, uh, including transportation projects, new city hall, um, police station, municipal court, fire station, those types of things. Uh, so, some of those real high-level community priorities. And then finally, uh, Shelley would like to talk just a little bit about required council training, uh, as part of that discussion. That's what I have on my list right now. Um, I don't know if the, the council would like to add something or remove an item from that list for a retreat coming up on the 25th.
So it is, it is the 25th?
Yes.
Okay. Cause you'd sent out a request, I haven't heard.
I, I, I think tentatively, we're looking at the 25th. I don't know any, if anyone has a conflict with that date, Councilman? Yeah, it's good with the location. And I don't know that we've set the location or the time for that meeting. Again, council preference on meeting time and location.
Individually, you all agreed that, uh, next, uh, week, Thursday, beginning at 9:00.
9:00?
Yeah. Sorry?
What date?
Thursday, 25th.
Would you like to do that at the golf course here? Do you have a preference?
I like golf.
Doesn't sound very retreaty, not that I'm buying anything fancy, but I just wanna make sure.
I'd like to get more thought. Yeah, someplace, yeah, maybe we don't regularly meet. Feel a little different. It is, it will be an open meeting.
We also have a special meeting coming up, I believe it's May 30th, Shelley, for a hotel occupancy tax discussion with the council. Do we have a, a, a time and location for that?
This will be where your, um, requesters will come in, and if you have questions, you ask them.
My preference, sorry. My preference, could we make this? I'm sorry, I don't remember the timeline exactly. Does it have to be on the 30th? Or could we have this as part of our next week's discussion? At a regular council meeting?
Do you wanna move it to June the 6th, we can? There's, we, normally the timeline was we approved and we got contracts out before May 1st, so we moved everything back this year.
I've just, that's how I've seen it in the past, is it's part of a regular meeting, right?
We need to have a special meeting for that, so that, uh, in an evening, people to be able to come.
That is a miracle.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea, because a lot of these applicants are gonna be wanting to come in the evening for that.
I'm gonna do 5:30? Six, I'll work it for you.
I will not be here on the 30th, so.
Are you coming on the 30th, and what is it you said?
Yes.
Okay. We're sure by evening of the 30th, should have that meeting with the applicants. Inviting the applicants, let's say.
And I will check and see if this room's available. Not hope.
Okay.
We are starting to talk about a couple of joint meetings with the county. Did have a meeting last week with Judge Jones, um, Garrett, um, Chief Bezzel and I. And we talked about having a very preliminary budget discussion during a joint meeting. And at this point, we feel like we probably need to get through our retreat with the council to talk about, again, very high level budget priorities. And then also our capital improvement plan presentation, which we have scheduled for June 6th right now. Um, before we get together with the county. They're starting to have some preliminary, uh, budget discussions. Uh, if we can get through that, we, we'll have a lot more to share. Um, Daniel felt like that would probably be a little bit better to do that, maybe towards mid to the end of, of June. And again, the council's preference on, uh, timing for, for that joint meeting. If that makes sense to the council, I can continue to work with, um, county and try to get something set up in that regard.
Yes.
Continue to do that. And then the housing authority, uh, joint meeting, mayor, just whatever feedback you're giving from.
Get the, Emily's view. Are you ready to put this on a consideration? Item as a consideration on?
With what?
That we're supposed to, as the, the council can't move it from here for.
I have not had conversations with everyone actually, never.
Okay.
But not yet. But would it be someone else? You ready to move on this?
Yeah, being new, I, I'd like to just spend a little time on the SWOT analysis and get input from everyone here in the audience to better understand options. And, uh, and, and I would, but I'm the new guy. I would like to keep it on.
You want it to be a housing authority discussion or more broad housing options?
Uh, I'm open to broader, um, options, uh, discussing the housing issue. Is that the way it would be worded?
Just us discussing it or are we going to have people to talk through?
Uh, I'm open to anybody's suggestions about how to handle this. I'm open to, um, having, inviting whoever needs to come, um, having reports. We've, we've heard from, we have Vince's report, you know, of course that. Uh, the CBB, um, chamber, um, testimony from employers. I, I'm open to that. And it can be more aggressive in pursuit. I want to get to, I, I obviously want to get to, I feel like we're making some progress on this and I just y'all, that's not my goal.
And maybe we could use Vince's report as a framework. It's like, one thing is zoning. Let's dig into zoning. What can we change? What do we not have to wait for the comp plan over? What can we do, you know? Then CDC's looking housing, you know, just be more intentional, I guess, about it. And then knowing, that way people can know and also getting expert then, the planning association or, you know, whatever housing authority this year.
Open to any help I can get. So, um, let me visit with you before we put it on the next agenda about how to word it. Okay, Emily? And, uh, and individually, Randy, you'll get to work on the other.
So we'll continue to work with the county on getting a joint meeting scheduled. And again.
Well, concerned about a meeting, uh, clutter, um, with county especially. Cause, um, maybe we're talking about budget, we're talking about housing authority, that maybe any other issue that may come up next. Uh, I wanted to do one about water, um, before we got too much in the summer. Um, getting the sense that that's too much. So I'm, do you think I'm right?
And, and I think the county, the county would like to spread it out just a little bit. I think some of the information we're talking about gathering regarding housing authority, rain, SWOT analysis, or a number of different options, maybe getting some other communities, uh, at the table that have housing authorities, including the county maybe in that discussion. You know, their outlook is quite different, um, than, than the cities with respect to this. So, you know, maybe just having them, uh, at the table in a joint meeting when we, you know, have this much broader discussion would be beneficial.
Well, if they would meet with us on, if they'd be able to meet with us on everything, that's fine. Just three or four items, either one meeting, three, whatever. Good. First time? Yeah, I would.
Yeah. I'll work on that on this.
I'm having, having to help.
And that is all I have for special meetings coming up.
Ready to move on down to 10th, or do we just do that?
Well, we have a few more items on, on the, the June 6th agenda, if we can go to that. We have in, uh, parks, consideration of adopting new easement policies for sports facility usage. Think we'll be ready to go on that. Andrea, consideration of amendment to LCR A electric line easement. Similar to, to amendments that were considered previously by the council. We have discussion of a proclamation policy. Believe this was requested by the mayor, uh, discuss aquatic program agreements. Andrea, keep that on. And of course, we, we'll come up with modified, uh, modified description for the portable housing, um, item. But this item is specifically for the consideration of extension of the Affordable Housing Coordinators Consulting Agreement. I mentioned the capital improvement plan presentation. We would like to add that to the agenda. And do we have any board appointments for that one? You have that listed on? Okay, so board appointments on that, that agenda also. And that is all I have for now unless the council has anything to add or remove from the June 6th meeting.
Am I good?
Thank you.
All right, we have a, a executive, um, executive session, couple of items. Uh, first is the, some, uh, consultation city attorney, um, pending or contemplate litigation as you read and, uh, an issue with real estate.
I'm going to go out of regular session to executive session.
Okay.
Motion and second to go into executive session from regular, all in papers, say, oh. All right.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
We're live. All right, we are back into regular session. We have no further business items to discuss.
I move we adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn on the paper say.
Aye.
Thank you.